Call a special meeting of the Salem Housing Authority for February 24th to order. If the recorder would please call a roll.
Commissioner Tesler.
President.
Commissioner Nanki.
Here.
Commissioner Clausen.
Here.
Commissioner Dickey.
Here.
Commissioner Thomas.
Here.
Commissioner Benars.
Here.
Commissioner Clem.
Here.
Commissioner Hein is absent. Chair Bennett.
Here.
Do you want me to pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Nanki, a motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would move approval of this special meeting agenda for the Salem Housing Authority for February 24th, 2014.
Second by Clausen. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We have no one signed up for public comment. Anyone want to comment to the housing authority? Right. And we have a couple of action items. Commissioner Nanki.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for Action Item 4A regarding the Southview Terrace Apartments' bond issuance and loan refinance. I would move staff recommendation.
Second. Second by?
Tesler.
Tesler. Okay. Questions from Mr. Wilch? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Commissioner Nanki.
Yes, on Item 4B regarding the fair housing certification, I would move staff recommendation.
Second.
Second by Benars. Any discussion? Questions for Mr. Wilch? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Our business is finished. We are adjourned.
That was special.
Assume.
I should get home in time for Jeopardy. Double Jeopardy.
All right. Good evening. We'll now begin the meeting for the special meeting for the Salem Urban Renewal Agency for February 24th, 2014. Will the recorder please call the roll? For Member Bennett.
Here.
For Member Tesler.
President.
For Member Nanki.
Here.
For Member Clausen.
Here.
For Member Dickey.
Here.
For Member Thomas.
Here.
For Member Benars.
Here.
For Member Clem.
Here.
Chair Peterson.
Here.
Thank you. Member Bennett, do you have a motion for the meeting agenda?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move approval of the special meeting agenda.
Second.
It's been moved by Member Bennett and seconded by Member Benars to approve the special meeting agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. We have time for public comment for specific agenda items, and on our list are Rich Harcourt and Jill Bauer. Mr. Harcourt, would you like to start?
I see that's not Jill Bauer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and councilors. No, Jill Bauer couldn't make it this evening, but Jim is going to substitute for him.
Thank you.
I'm Rich Harcourt and Chair of the Oregon Artist Series Foundation, and we're here in support of the item before you with to gain the funding necessary to begin a very important project that's following in the footsteps of so much that has been done by the city and the Urban Renewal Agency and the Salem Convention Center, Oregon Artist Series Foundation, Downtown Advisory Board, all on the same path to make this happen. What we're talking about here is the continuation of the opportunity to bring sculpture pieces right to the downtown area. Right now, as you know, we've been working with the Convention Center to bring art to the Sculpture Plaza, and we viewed that over these last few years as the experimental test kitchen, if you will, to be able to figure out how we can bring major sculpture in, move it around, figure out what kind of bases, tweak it, whatever is necessary to do so. None of this could have happened without Peter Fernandez and his Public Works Group that's been working with his hand in glove on this opportunity, as well as the Urban Renewal Agency. Key on this is the fact now that we want to look at the Conference Center Sculpture Gallery as the staging area to put art on the streets of downtown with pedestals, and that is the reason why we've requested this opportunity to find the funding necessary. I'm going to be very brief because Jim Bauer, late of Jill Bauer, is going to be able to add to this program. I'm here to help answer any questions based on the report, which is fairly thorough, but Jim Bauer is going to be able to give us, because of his work with Vision 2020, his work with all that has been done to bring long-term strategic planning, he'll be able to show how this all fits in to the cityscape opportunities going forward. So I'm going to stop right now and turn this over to Jim Bauer, a member of the board of Oregon Artist Series Foundation, and he's also been the past Chair of the Downtown Advisory Board, as you know, as well as Vision 2020. So Jim, why don't you take on next?
So we will answer any questions. Would you rather wait until we're done giving you the pitch?
Yes, why don't you go ahead, and then we'll have questions probably for both of you. Okay.
Thank you. Three college degrees, and I can't write very well. I'm sorry.
It's all right. I don't read very well, obviously.
So what we've been trying to do is do what we all have said we're supposed to do, which is to take a plan, find a group of partners to work together, and to accomplish something out of that. So when I completed my term on Downtown Advisory Board, I actually began working with Oregon Artist Series Foundation Board as a member, and what we were talking about is this idea that everybody has, but there was not a good way to get it done, and that is to get art into the downtown in a way that people consider valuable. And the way that we learned that people thought it was valuable is so they could see it, so it would be out front, and it would create verve, and it would create vitality. So we took the Downtown Strategic Action Plan, we took the ideas out of that, and we said, how can we go to work to do this? And the idea is to take SPAC, Salem Public Art Commission, as a group that is a part of the city, who kind of juries what's the right kind of art to put in, how to do it, Oregon Artist Series Foundation Board, which is a nonprofit, who can go raise money, and the Downtown Advisory Board, Urban Renewal Agency, and how do we partner with them so that we put this all together? We can go out and raise the money, we get support for the pedestals, which are going to be on the city property, they are the city property, we're going to donate all the art that we receive, that we, out of these donations, and we're going to put art on the ground. And the whole idea is to create vitality and livability, pride, community effort, and it's not all on one person's arms, on their shoulders, it's trying to pull all these people together and go do something. So that's really our effort. We think we're going to raise enough money, we think we can probably, well, we believe we can get two of these in in the next six months, we think that we can get two more in the six months that follow that, it might take a year to get the next two, but we think there's enough people who are interested to donate that we're going to get something going very fast. As Rich said, the whole Sculpture Garden idea at the Convention Center was to bring art into this downtown. Now we can start moving it out of there, bring more art into there, you can see the rotation, you can see the idea. So that's really it. Simple plan, trying to do it in an organized way and working with the city.
Wonderful. All right. Are there questions for either Mr. Bauer or Mr. Harcourt? Yes, Member Clausen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, gentlemen, for the presentation. So what physically can we expect to see? I mean, are we going to see an empty pedestal till something shows up? Are we going to see the David on the street corner? Are we seeing smaller things? I was trying to visualize it.
I'll give you one piece. We already have a piece selected that's in the Sculpture Garden that we know we can move right now. So the first one is there. We're about ready to reveal another piece that generously has come into the Sculpture Garden. I think it will be at the end of March, is that right? So you'll see another piece that won't be on the city, but the point of this is that we can't really be the ones to say it's going to be this piece. That's what the Salem Public Art Commission is a part of this for. So they're going to be the jury of what pieces go there.
And, if I may, Madam Mayor.
Yes, yes.
So are we talking on street? I'm trying to get a visual.
Try, imagine a bull bout right now.
Okay.
That's a potential spot.
So like center it in the bull bout, something like that?
Yeah.
As opposed to putting it on the curb in the middle of the block?
Well, yeah. Yeah.
On that point, Public Works Director Fernandez and his staff, at the request of the Salem Public Art Commission, actually found 11 possible sites in the downtown area that would not have a vault under it or some other problems. So we already have 10 possible locations, and then it becomes a question of the location and then the specific piece of art and whether it meets the traffic requirements, safety requirements, all that situation. Since there are so many pieces out there, Counselor, that could be there, there may be a pedestal which is for a permanent piece of art, suppose we get a very major grant for a piece that would be always in one location, or it might be a pedestal which would be placed when it is a, when a piece is moved in. We hope to see a rotation of some of the art pieces in time, or there could be some pieces that are permanently there, but you're not going to see a thumb sticking in the middle of nowhere until such time as we know what's going to go on that thumb.
And to add to this, this was a question that the Downtown Advisory Board asked us as well. Are they going to be lit? Are they going to be this? We don't know. I mean, obviously, what we want is to have the right kind of presentation, and if the resources are there and the piece requires some lighting, that kind of thing, then that's what we're going to work on. I mean, the whole idea, let's not do this halfway, to do this right, to do this in a way that when people walk into the downtown, they go, wow, that's amazing.
Yeah.
That's the effort.
One last, if I may.
Yes?
As far as vandalism goes or anything like that, do we have problems right now with the existing Sculpture Plaza? And then if there were vandalism to happen, I guess, who covers that, or have we thought about that?
I'm glad you asked that question, because the Downtown Advisory Board asked the same. And under the request, we made it clear that OASF would be responsible for working with the Salem Public Art Commission for the purchasing, acquiring, responsible for soliciting and coordinating with the city and Public Works. And the last point was, OASF will be responsible for routine maintenance, upkeep, art sculpture within the Urban Renewal Agency. So we would take the responsibility there, as we have now with the art in the Conference Center area, the same thing. The good news is, we have never had any vandalism or anything in that area.
And we are somewhat careful as we're looking at the pieces. I mean, are they, are they, do they have sharp edges? Are they, are they going to handle this?
Okay. Thank you.
Wonderful. Member Benars?
Thank you. I know as long back as I have been dealing with downtown, I think clear back when I was past president of the Salem Downtown Association, we've talked about putting art in downtown, and I fully support what you're doing to take that art, not just from the Sculpture Garden or Courtyard, but share it with everybody else in downtown. My question comes on the other side of things, which is, what are we purchasing exactly for $25,000?
You're giving us the support to go in and start working with the engineers and the other people to figure out the kind of base that we're going to need for the piece of art that we put in there.
So is this, $25,000 will take care of one piece of art that we can move out, or is it?
We know for sure that we can do two out of that. We might get three, we might get four.
It just seemed like a lot of money. I'm picturing this, something that you bolt to the ground and bolt to the structure, and it's just a piece of pipe or something, and?
Well, what did our most recent?
Well, yeah, it was only $2,500, $3,000 for one piece recently that we put in, and that included some funding to do some refurbishing on it. But I might say, with the Public Works Director right up there at the podium, part of this is going to be what the costs are to bring in lighting, for example, and any of that kind of pre-engineering requirements necessary. So I don't know whether Director Fernandez would like to comment on that, but through the chair, Madam Mayor, it would be wonderful if he could.
Thank you, Mr. Harcourt. Peter Fernandez, Public Works Director, and sitting in the city manager's chair, she's, she is off tonight, and our deputy is on vacation. Yeah, it's, anytime you go into the, into the street right-of-way, you know, we might land on a spot that's fairly simple, that the pedestal really is not a big, you know, four bolts, but even breaking up the ground to stick the bolts in so that we can attach the pedestal and tie the bolts down, you know, you get into costs, and you get into repairs, and you get into ADA upgrades, and then if there's lighting, or if there's other issues, you know, costs can escalate. I'm often surprised by how quickly costs can escalate. So it really just, as Mr. Harcourt and Bauer say, it really just depends on the location and what the piece is and how big it is, and do we need to do a foundation under it, or will it just sit on top?
I just want to make sure, from my point of view, it's a matter of making sure that money, that $25,000 is doing, obviously is doing good for downtown, but that we're accounting for the pennies that might otherwise go into a piece of property or redevelopment downtown.
Absolutely. I think, we hope that you can trust us to do good diligence on it, and our intent is absolutely to get the most out of this. And in our, in our case, you know, we're going to go out there, you know, we figured these, each of these pieces is a $15,000 investment, it could be more, it could be, you know, maybe we'll have a deal, but we haven't found any good pieces of art, truthfully, for less than about 15.
Yeah.
So, I mean, our, I think we all are in the position here of trying to do something that's special, and we don't want to do it, we don't want to do it halfway.
I look forward to seeing it downtown and how it might spur other people to come downtown, spend their time down there, and spend their money as well.
That's the idea. Chair here.
That's exactly it.
Well, I'd like to take a moment to say thank you so much to both Rich Harcourt and to Jim Bauer for really the, not just the hours, the years of service that you've both given to the city in so many different ways, and today, now, you're working jointly on bringing art right down into the sidewalk, which was something that was a dream that we had when we created the Oregon Artist Series Foundation, and a dream that went back to Vision 2020, and I just thank you both so much for all your dedication and your time and your thought.
And thank you, councilors, for the support all along for SPAC, and thank you, Madam Mayor, who was the first Chair of the Oregon Artist Series Foundation. We would not be up here right now had you not said, let's get some art into the Conference Center, and then from there, we're going to have art downtown.
Thank you.
And we're going to get some new art in the Conference Center.
Oh, yeah, that's one thing to mark your calendar, March 18th. We are going to hopefully have a good celebration for a new 12-foot sculpture piece done by a wonderful artist, Devon Field, who has, is internationally recognized but is in Portland. It's a piece that's been purchased by the Conference, by the Convention Center, and it will be installed at a gathering again, March 18, 5 to 7. We'll have some fun, and we're also opening up the next phase of exhibition with the art out of the vaults of Hallie Ford, which will be on the main Conference concourse area. So mark that date, and you'll get some invitations out very shortly.
Great pieces.
Wonderful, wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Thank you so much. All right. We have no one else signed up for public comment, so we have action items. Member Bennett, do you have a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, regarding the art pedestal street scape project, I move the staff recommendation.
It's been moved by Member Bennett and seconded by Member Tesler to move the staff recommendation. Is there discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying yes. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right. We have no further business to come before the Urban Renewal Agency, and this meeting is adjourned. All right. We will now move on and call to order this evening's meeting of the Salem City Council for February 24th, 2014. Would the recorder please call the roll? Counselor Bennett.
Here.
Counselor Tesler.
President.
Counselor Nanki.
Here.
Counselor Clausen.
Here.
Counselor Dickey.
Here.
Counselor Thomas.
Here.
Counselor Benars.
Here.
Counselor Clem.
Here.
Mayor Peterson.
Here. Thank you.
We need approval of additions and deletions to the agenda. Counselor Bennett, do you have a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move additions and deletions to the agenda. Madam Mayor, I just want to check too. Do we also want to delete Item 1.3 from the agenda?
Actually, I think we're leaving it there for comment, for some mayoral comment.
Okay. Thank you. Then I'll just move the yellow sheet, additions, deletions, and revisions.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Nanki to approve the additions and deletions to the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. We now have time for council and city manager comment. I'm going to start by asking our acting city manager, Peter Fernandez, if he has comments that he'd like to share this evening?
No. None at all. Delighted to be here.
None at all.
At the front. It's a very different view from here.
It is a different view from here. We enjoy having you up here with us. Thank you. All right. City councilors, are there comments? Counselor Dickey.
Thank you. I just wanted to share that on Saturday, I had the privilege of attending the McKay Annual Community Breakfast. I learned that it was actually the 31st annual community breakfast that they've had, and it was a really great event. It used to be a, they called it a senior breakfast, and now they've opened it up to families that serve or kind of in the McKay catchment area, so it was a really fun, some of the people who had attended, you know, for years and years and years came, and so it was a really fun, multi-generational, multicultural celebration, and I will have it on my calendar for next year, and hopefully we'll be able to get the word out so all of you will know about it and can come too. It's just something that's put on by McKay Student Government, a lot of local businesses provide the food, and it's just a really great community opportunity.
Lovely. Thank you. Other councilor comment? Yes, Counselor Tesler, and then Counselor Bennett.
Thanks. Last Wednesday, I went down and I attended a lecture at Willamette University with Mr. Gil Penelusa, Penelosa, and he was talking about the concept of cities being structured. It's an 8 to 80 cities concept. So the concept was developing cities so that eight-year-olds to 80-year-olds can safely bike and pedestrian in cities, and he had some really amazing examples of some work that he had done in Bogota, and also in other cities across Europe, and some other cities in the United States, too. And he made some interesting points. One of them was that sharos don't work. Another one was that a lot of the bike lanes that we have designed, they're designed incorrectly because the bike lane is protecting the car next to the curb. So it's, just some of the points that he made were very, very interesting. He talked about these two women, I think they're called boroughs in New York City? Is that correct?
Yes, the boroughs.
Not words. And these two women that were the head of their borough, made all these changes for bikes and pedestrians, including Times Square.
Wow.
Which was really amazing what they did. And it was just a question of, you know, thinking about the planning and then doing some striping and thinking about traffic, and it was really fascinating, because I was thinking, you know, if they could do this in New York City, we could do this here. You know? I mean, New York City is what, 9 million people? We could do it.
I got a thing, yeah.
We could do it. So we had some interesting ideas for maybe some test areas in Counselor Bennett's work, which I will, you know, be working with him to see if maybe he would like to buy into it and talk to city staff, but I think we can definitely do a little better job of getting people through downtown a little safely. But the lecture was fascinating, full house, lots of interesting people, put on by transit, and I was happy to be there and represent council. So, and I understand we're going to have a work session with them in the future, at least that's what I was told.
Oh, really?
They recorded it, so maybe they can play some of it at the work session. But anyway, guy was a great speaker, fascinating, dynamic speaker. Very good.
Wonderful. And that was at Willamette?
Yeah, it was at the School of Law in the Polis Auditorium.
Uh-huh.
And they had good food before, too.
Great. Great. Okay. Other comment? Counselor Bennett.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, this weekend, I received a number of emails regarding sale of puppies in the public right-of-way, and I'm going to tell you, I have looked at this issue before. I think that we need to get very serious about finding a solution to this. We have merchants who have folks selling puppies that are clearly not cared for. They've not had their shots, they've not, as far as we can tell, been looked at by veterinarians. They're parked in front of businesses that have asked them to leave. The businesses are unable to have the public right-of-way in front of their businesses cleared of this activity. The comments I received range from just young people, kids, who sent me emails, as well as representatives of the Humane Society. I have taken a look at this issue before and run into sort of First Amendment. We seem to run into First Amendment every time we talk about our public right-of-way. I'd really like to have a close look at this. I'll be bringing a counselor motion on this as I get a more clarified view of what we can do. Other cities around the country have found a way to deal with this, really, just genuinely, if you get up close to this, almost unspeakable practice. It really is quite disturbing, and it's the season again. This went on all of last summer. We saw puppies out in the sun and sort of on their own. It's really quite an unpleasant practice, and I think we ought to at least take a very close look in the near future as to whether this is the kind of thing we want to have on our major thoroughfares and some of our major, in front of some of our major businesses. So I'll be following up on this, and I hope as, if any of you have any thoughts on this, one way or the other, I'd be very interested in your thoughts.
Great. I'm glad that you, Counselor Bennett, that you brought this up this evening.
The businesses are unable to have the public right-of-way in front of their businesses cleared of this activity. The comments I received range from just young people, kids, who sent me emails, as well as representatives of the Humane Society. I have taken a look at this issue before and run into sort of First Amendment. We seem to run into First Amendment every time we talk about our public right-of-way. I'd really like to have a close look at this. I'll be bringing a councilor motion on this as I get a more clarified view of what we can do. Other cities around the country have found a way to deal with this, really, just genuinely, if you get up close to this, almost unspeakable practice. It really is quite disturbing, and it's the season again. This went on all of last summer. We saw puppies out in the sun and sorta on their own. It's really quite an unpleasant practice, and I think we ought to at least take a very close look in the near future as to whether this is the kind of thing we want to have on our major thoroughfares and some of our major, in front of some of our major businesses. So I'll be following up on this, and I hope as, if any of you have any thoughts on this, one way or the other, I'd be very interested in your thoughts.
Great. I'm glad that you, Counselor Bennett, that you brought this up this evening, because I too had received several emails and was concerned about exactly what is going on out there, and then what we might do. And I would ask that probably we should be sure that we're responding to the people who send the emails, and maybe we can have some help with, probably from our city attorney, to help us draft what would be an appropriate response, so that we're not indicating something that we can't do, but that we would be looking at the issue and then further bringing it to council. That's a good idea. Good idea. Okay. I have a comment, and I'm going to see if I can do this, and I have a guest to introduce. Is this on? I have a guest to introduce, because this evening, and this will, I'll just take a couple minutes, but Chip Conrad is here with Lemmy, and I'm going to hold Lemmy while Mr. Conrad tells you about Lemonade Day.
All right. Yes. This is Lemmy, a lemon.
This is Lemmy the lemon. Okay.
Madam Mayor, thank you. City councilors, thank you very much. My name is Chip. I run the Center for Entrepreneurial Education and Development here in Salem, and together with the city, we're bringing in an exciting event slash program called Lemonade Day. Well, Lemonade Day is on May 4th, there will be hundreds of lemonade stands across Salem Kaiser area, run by four-to-fifteen, sixteen-year-olds in the sake of entrepreneurship. What Lemonade Day is, is actually a fourteen-step curriculum that walks kids through how to start and run their own company. And here in the next couple of weeks, thousands of, or hundreds of kids will be getting this bag with the curriculum across this city. Our goal is to have a thousand kids take place in this event, and once, it's not an event, it's just a curriculum that works its way up. It culminates on May 4th when we celebrate their finishing this curriculum. So, thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate it.
We're glad to have Lemmy with us. Anytime. We didn't rehearse, you can tell.
Thank you very much.
You would've worn it, yeah, you would've put it right on your head. No, I don't think I'll do that. All right.
Is there, are there any other counselor comments? I want to speak to the item that is on the agenda, 1.3, and many of you may have discovered by now that we, in fact, are not conducting the interviews this evening for the Planning Commission. In reviewing the process that the committee had followed, we realized that we were not actually quite prepared yet this evening for interviews, and rather than proceed without a proper pool of applicants for the appointment, I requested that we simply hold that off until we're able to create the applicant pool and then move forward. I want to speak very specifically to the need that we have as a city to be certain that we are recruiting and encouraging people of all ages, not all ages, they have to be, I believe, eighteen and older, but a more diverse group of applicants for all of our boards and commissions. Again and again, I'm so frustrated, as those are other members who are on the committee, when only men have applied for the boards and the commissions that we have the responsibility to fill with appointment. And that, again, was the case with our Planning Commission. So I'm putting a plea out to the community to please encourage women and minorities to apply for our boards and commissions. You will be welcomed, you will be heartily, heartily rejoiced as a part of the civic life of this community. And so it's with that intent that I ask that tonight, we just put aside the Planning Commission interviews, so that instead, we'd have some time this evening to really think about and reflect on the need that we have as a community, and really as an international city, to recognize and appoint people of a more diverse nature to all of our boards and commissions. So with that, I will, again, direct people to the website where applications and lists are available, and encourage all of you here tonight, and people who are watching, to recommend to people that you work with, or your neighbors or relatives, to look at those lists and seriously think about becoming involved in the life of, the civic life of our community. So thank you for the time to be able to discuss that. We do have time now for public comment, and I have a couple of people signed up for public comment tonight. I see Ron Rubell and Jeff McNamie. So we'll start with Mr. Rubell. Welcome.
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Good evening.
Council members, staff, and guests. I'm Ron Rubell, and I reside at 1095 Wallace Street Southeast here in Salem. As president of the Senior Advisory Commission, I'm pleased to present the 2013 Annual Report for Center 50+. Our report highlights accomplishments in implementing the four key goals of our strategic plan. The first stresses continuing to grow our stability and vitality. A key element is increasing financial self-reliance. Non-general Fund income sources include program fees, fundraising efforts, business sponsorships, and planned giving. The center continues to be a wise investment for the city. Using a heavily volunteer workforce, each general fund dollar received is estimated to put more than $4 worth of value back into the community. That's about 2.5 million for a $450,000 investment. Our strategy is to decrease reliance on the general fund in future years. The second goal embraces collaboration. The center continues its work with community partners to provide services beyond its own budget, both at the center and throughout Salem. The partners list includes both private and nonprofit entities. Programming and community connections is the third area. The center is both a local and Oregon leader in providing high-quality services to an aging population. In '06, Center 50+ was the first of its type in Oregon to achieve national accreditation. We were recently notified that we have now achieved re-accreditation. An additional staff report announcing our accreditation celebration on March 3rd is provided as an attachment. We hope everyone will join us for that event. Citizen leadership is the fourth area, and it's crucial to the center's operation. Last year, over 500 volunteers delivered more than 71,000 hours of service. This was down 10% from prior year. This trend is not unique to our center. The face of volunteerism is changing. Our response includes ACT NOW, Community Action Team. That format allows recruiting volunteers for more project-specific, shorter-duration volunteer activities. Center 50+ continues as an active and well-utilized facility. More than 700 people attend daily. We continue to transition to a center that promotes a proactive approach to successful aging, supporting the health and well-being of the 50-plusers of our community. That role's significance continues to grow, right along with the growth in that demographic segment. All age groups will be affected if this segment is unable to fulfill its role. We see our role at Center 50+ as a holistic one. It is to keep this group healthy, engaged, and connected to a healthy Salem now and in the future. Thank you, council, for your support.
Are there questions for Mr. Rubell? Well, I want to say thank you so much to you and to the work that you're doing with the board at Center 50+. And I also want to recognize the director of Center 50+, for whom we're very fortunate because of her enthusiasm and her energy and her creativity and her way of being able to recruit so many volunteers, Marilyn Daly. Marilyn, will you please stand and be recognized? We appreciate so much what you're doing. Thank you so much. Thank you, Ron. All right, Jeff McNamie is here, and I believe you're going to speak on item 7F, which has to do with the trail improvements at Wallace Marine Park?
That is correct.
Yes, welcome. And you'll have, actually, you have five minutes to speak.
Okay.
Uh huh.
I'll keep it short.
No, that's fine.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Thank you for that introduction. Council members, city staff, and other guests. My name is Jeff McNamie. As the mayor pointed out, I live at 3887 Orchard Heights Road Northwest. I am here on behalf of the Salem Area Trail Alliance, a group which I serve as president. And as the mayor pointed out, I'm here to discuss Agenda Item 7F, Trail Improvements at Wallace Marine Park, and answer any questions you may have. The Salem Area Trail Alliance is a grassroots, volunteer-led organization that seeks to design, build, and maintain nearby non-motorized trails for health-enhancing recreational opportunities. We are a chapter of the International Mountain Bike Association with 501(c)(3) status. Our organization is composed of members and a volunteer board of directors, some of whom are here tonight. I'd like to recognize Mr. Kurt Haas and Ellen Miller, Ms. Ellen Miller. Our members, sorry, other members include Beth Dayton, who's enjoying herself on a bike ride in New Zealand, Don Hutchinson, and Michael Peterson. We exist because we want to increase recreational trail capacity in the Salem area. The Salem Area Trail Alliance has built and is currently maintaining trails, hiking, running, and mountain bike trails within Lincoln Access and Spring Valley-Willamette River Greenways. These are parks that are part of the Oregon State Park System. These trails and parks are within 15 minutes' drive of West Salem. Spring Valley and Lincoln Access were developed via an Adopt a Park Agreement with the Oregon Parks and Recreation Department. We have a series of other projects in various stages of development, and have an enthusiastic response from both public and private landowners. These include creation of hiking and mountain bike-specific natural surface trails at several Silver Falls State Park, design and construction of a network of trails at Minto Brown. We're working closely with city staff to improve the Creighton scenic trails, and we've also had some volunteer days at Wallace Marine Park, where we've gotten, where we've reduced some of the invasive species. We have a partnership with Travel Oregon, Travel Salem, the International Mountain Bike Association, and the Yola Amity Hills American Viticulture Area to design a mountain biking and hiking trail along their lands. A few of our recent grant awards include a National Parks and River and Conservation Assistance Program grant to provide technical assistance with the bike park concept plan you have in your appendix, a recreational trails program grant administered through the Oregon State Parks and Recreation Department, and the Federal Highway Commission. I'd like to add that these are extremely competitive grants. We were the only nonprofit to win this grant in 2013. And an REI community grant to support our overall trail stewardship. We are keenly interested in expanding the trail system at Wallace Marine Park. The concept plan you have in your appendix was developed after three years of consultation with city assailant parks, staff, and input from community members. We held two different design workshops where community members attended and provided their feedback as to what they would like to see within the facility. The Parks Advisory Board and the West Salem Neighborhood Association have both endorsed our concept plan. The community's vision for this park includes expanded natural terrain trails, low-to-the-ground skill features, two pump tracks similar to a BMX track, one for young children and one for more advanced riders. We envision a facility that is inviting to families and to all abilities. The Salem Area Trail Alliance is not requesting funds from the city of Salem. I'll repeat again, we're not requesting funds. We have already begun our grant writing process, applying for some letters of inquiry, and we are drafting a strategic fundraising plan to support the project. We also intend to take care of long-term maintenance of the bike park facility. We look forward to working with council and the city park staff, and believe this will be a tremendous asset to the city of Salem. I'd like to personally thank Mr. Keever and his staff for their diligence and willingness to work with us over the past three years. Thank you, Keith. Thank you, council.
Thank you. Are there questions by any of the councilors? Counselor Tesler?
Yeah, Jeff, my first question is, where can I get like 20 more of you? 100 more of you? I would just really like to wax enthusiastic about this individual and also the organization that he is here to talk about tonight. This is how we get trails built. We don't have the budget to do that. You had spoken in the past, Mayor, about possibly having a trail on the other side of the river. This is how we're gonna probably do that. And this is the kind of leverage and enthusiasm and thinking out of the box that drives us to aspire for these kind of trail systems. And I'll tell you that I use that system in the back of the softball fields, and it was scary back there until they got back there and started doing the weeds. And we gotta get more people back there, because the more people you have using an area, the less negative activity you have. I also took some guests this weekend out to the wineries and stopped at Springwater, and Springwater is amazing. These people have done such a wonderful job at Springwater. Springwater used to be nothing but blackberries, trash, people living there illegally. You have done a wonderful job. Parks and Recreation District will not shut up about these people. They are, this is what we're gonna be doing in the future, I think, as far as working with these people. Friends of Trees is another really good example of another group that we work with, to get the job done. And I really, really want to commend you and your board members for that, because we need that drive locally. And when I get done with this gig, I'm gonna come stomp around with you some more, I think. But this is, I really thank you for that, because you are making a difference, a big difference, and I appreciate it greatly.
Thank you.
I'd like to add my voice to that. First, Counselor Benars, would you like to make some comment?
I grew up in West Salem, and I remember this area quite well. I've been looking at the map, and over the last several days, actually, and I'm trying to envision how far to the north of the parking lot that's used for the softball fields. There's an area that's fairly open. Further to the north is an area that's kind of closed with trails as well. Can you describe kind of the, I understand your pump cycle and so forth, but can you describe how far north, how big this park is?
Mr. Keever might be able to speak to the exact boundary later, but it's just north, essentially, of the pond. So if you think of the pond that's back there, the city boundary isn't too much further than that, so we don't envision anything going further north than that. Some of the existing trails that exist are, of course, on private land, and we're not moving toward that area.
As we all know, or may know, this was once, at one time, a gravel pit. And a lot of these low and high spots in here are as a result of that activity many, many, many years ago. So I, you know, the other concern I have is, of course, children and other people who might be living in that area that we've had problems and known problems with, just trying to make sure that there's not a conflict or something happens. And I don't know how that's gonna be prevented, but something to keep our eyes on. Thank you.
All right. I would like to say how much I appreciate the work that you've all been doing and your commitment to our community and to making our parks more accessible and to encouraging more people to really get out and recreate and enjoy our natural resources. Council has heard me say many times recently, I firmly believe that recreation and natural resources will be our next economic engine. And so you're sort of at the front of the train, and I duly noted your name, so that when I begin working on that, I'll know who to call right away for some assistance and for ideas and input from you as well. So thank you so much for what you've been doing, and I look forward personally to getting out. I don't ride a bike anymore, but I think I could walk on those trails, right? Is that allowed?
We would love to have you walk on those trails.
All right. Okay, maybe we can do a little tour out there. That would be fun.
That'd be great.
Be great. Do what?
Jump.
Jump. Okay, I can jump. Thank you very much. Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Clem had a comment.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I just, appreciate your comments from the councilors and from the mayor. Jeff, thanks for the work here. Will we see more in the neighborhoods about how this continues to progress? Because this is the concept plan. So where do we start first? I mean, what, you've already cleaned up some of the trails, but what will we see in 2014 or '15 in terms of development of this?
So one of our first steps will be to reduce the brush and try to create more, better sightlines for everyone, so that everyone feels safer in the park. And then we'll work a lot with the existing trails that are already there, taking advantage some of those great rollers that are already part of the gravel pit. We recently brought in a consultant to start looking at costs, and he said, wow, I don't know if you know it, but you have a really great site to work with. There's a lot of good soil here that we can work with. So he was pretty optimistic.
And we used to ride motorcycles back in here, but I think you hit it right on the head. We clear back this brush, which we've done some cleanups before, and Counselor Tesler said it, we get people, park users, back there. I think it just makes it safer for everybody, but clearing back that brush and then marking those trails, lots of folks. But clearing back that brush and then marking those trails, lots of folks won't take them because they don't know that it ever comes back around. So I hope marking of the trails, even as rough as they are now, is a good second step.
Trail signage is definitely part of our budget.
Yeah, okay. Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Wonderful, yes. Thank you so much. I'd like to thank Keith Keever as well. I thought he was just, oh, there he is, right there, for the work that you've been doing in our parks is just outstanding. And the more we have available in the parks, the more people will be able to use and enjoy. And so it's really heartwarming when I see this public-private partnership that's really going on to make this possible. Thank you. Okay, was there anyone else who was here this evening that wanted to speak? Mr. Bauer.
Thank you. Jim Bauer, 1866 Merritt Street South in Salem. And just quickly, I wanted to comment on 7G on your agenda. I'm involved with the advisory group for downtown, and the reason I wanted to just make a quick point to you is there's a subgroup of the advisory group, which is Garth Randow, Randy Compton, myself, and Gail Caldezaro Doty, who have been working on trying to find a way to narrow some of the thinking about the downtown effort so that we're getting to things that people consider to be valuable, that the building owners, who are the voters on this, will find valuable. So you'll see in the report somewhat of a narrowing of some of the discussion about what can be done, and that's coming from some of the views of our subcommittee. Some things like cleanliness, communication. It may not be that this group can take on all of the things that other groups have tried to do because there is either not enough time or resources to do that. But there are some things that are coming to fore that may be, that people consider more valuable than other things. So I guess my point is to ask you to read that report carefully and notice that there is a nuance to it. It's a narrowing of some of the discussion that has gone down. It's not that this group is assembled to go fill all the vacancies, but that maybe some pointed effort will bring some things to fore that will cause the vacancies to fill because other things are being done better than they've ever been done. So I'm just pointing it out to you. I know it's an information report, but I just wanted you to know there was a process behind it.
Well, thank you very much. Are there questions for Mr. Bauer? Appreciate you coming and speaking about that.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
It's now time for the consent calendar. Counselor Bennett, do you have a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move the consent calendar.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Ben Arz to move the consent calendar. Is there a discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Do you have a public hearing this evening? Begins with deliberations. Do we have a staff comment? Yes, Glenn Gross, welcome.
Good evening. I'm Glenn Gross, the Community Development Director. I do just have a couple of comments I'd like to make at the beginning. Hopefully, they're clarifying comments, and then we're here to answer any questions that might come up. The first has to do with setbacks, and basically, why did we recommend a reduction in the setback in the first place? The proposed code reduces, or proposes to reduce the current 300-foot setback from residential zones to 30 feet. And the reason we did that is because there simply is not enough land in non-residential zones to accommodate the need for new towers if we maintain that 300-foot setback. That's why we're seeing variances, frankly, to that particular standard. Now, if the council chooses, certainly this is fine, if the council chooses to make an alternative to 300 feet, we can live with that, we can work with that, we can make that work. The only thing we would request is that the standard be variable, that it continue to be variable. If it were not variable and we couldn't do adjustments or variances, we'd be concerned that we could be in violation of federal wireless law. So that's it for the setbacks. The other one's a little bit, did you want me to stop?
No.
No, 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 not yet.
The other issue's a little bit more complicated. It's going to take a little bit longer. And that has to do with this whole business of capacity. So the question is, why did we change our recommendation with respect to capacity? So this has been an issue, I think, because we're dealing with, on the one hand, evolving technology, and on the other hand, evolving legal framework. And they're both changing on us pretty quickly. And this has been kind of a result of that, I think. The issue of whether to include the concept of capacity in the proposed code is related to what constitutes a gap in service. And a key feature of the proposed code is that a carrier must document that a new cell tower is the only way to fill a significant gap in service. The Planning Commission recommended that capacity, in addition to coverage, be considered when determining a significant gap in service. The city's consultant, who's here tonight, Pam Berry, subsequently thought about that and recommended that we not include capacity because, at that time, there was no accepted definition that we were aware of of what constituted capacity. Representatives of AT&amp;T and T-Mobile requested the city council restore the reference to capacity at the hearing back in January, on January 27. They assert that the wireless communication, and by that they mean both voice and data, can be dropped or blocked when an antenna is overloaded and is therefore is beyond its capacity to process demands on the system. And so they, AT&amp;T specifically, provided a proposed definition of capacity, which we didn't have before. And the city's consultant has reviewed that proposed definition, and with the exception of a reference to future demands, concurs with the definition if the council so chooses. So thus, we are now back recommending that we include the concept of capacity along with coverage when we're considering whether or not a gap in service, a significant gap in service exists. So those are my two clarifying comments. Like I said, we're here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gross. Counselor Bennett, I see your hand up.
Yes, thank you. Just a couple of questions, Mr. Gross. Has there been an analysis of a proposed 100-foot setback? You suggested you want to keep a variance process. Is there some indication, then, that 100 feet has an impact that would require a variance process?
We chose 30 feet because we thought that would probably eliminate any need for variance requests. We showed you a map, if you recall, at the first hearing, where we showed you the areas that would be available with the 300 feet, and it's very limited. We didn't do a similar map at 100 feet. We certainly could, if that would help the council. 100 would be better than 300 feet, I can say that. But no, we haven't done, we haven't done a spatial analysis of 100.
Well, the only, well, you're recommending that we include a variance process you're not recommending at 30 feet, right? Or are you continuing a variance?
We were always recommending that you leave the variance as a possibility.
A variance even at 30?
Yeah, we didn't think it would happen very often because at 30 feet, we're providing enough land for.
Well, I've just been through two variance processes in my ward, both passed. One was residential, one was industrial, and I didn't see there was a huge problem with it at 300 feet. It appeared that it could occur at 300 feet. So I'm just not sure. I guess one of the things I thought was going on with your proposal was you were trying to eliminate variances, and that if that's the approach, why would we leave variances in the code? If you can't find something 30 feet away or 100 feet away from somebody's house, maybe you need to look for another someplace to locate rather than vary it and just put it there.
Yeah. The issue is, when it comes right down to it, the issue is we have to be able to demonstrate that our code doesn't effectively prohibit a provider from providing service.
Do other communities have 100 feet and have been ruled as prohibiting cell towers?
I'm not aware of any community, maybe our consultant can speak to this, but I'm not aware of any community that has passed an ordinance, that has an ordinance that doesn't allow for adjustments or variances to their standard, whatever that standard may be.
So what you're arguing, I guess, I want to make sure I understand this, okay? That essentially, the FCC regulation dictates that we have a variance process in order not to be ruled as prohibiting siting of cell towers.
Yeah, I don't want to, I don't want to get into the city attorney's area, but that's my understanding, yes.
Dan Atchison, city attorney. Essentially, the Telecommunications Act, and Pam can probably speak to this better than I can, but it prohibits cities from effectively prohibiting the provision of necessary service. So if we don't have a variance or an adjustment procedure in our code, and there's a situation where they are not able to provide service based on our setback, we're not able to vary that standard, we could very likely be sued in federal court for violating the Telecommunications Act. That's why we advocate including a variance procedure, as we do for all other land use standards in the ordinance.
Okay.
All right. Counselor Clem, and then Counselor Tesler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Glenn, in the January public hearing, there was a request for information on heights of other communities, and Beaverton and Eugene were in the 80 to 100-foot, or height of tower. Most of these towers, these applications, particularly these variances, what kind of heights were they looking at?
I'm going to ask Pamela Cole to come up and speak.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm trying to compare us with what other communities are doing, so.
Well, for most of the variance cases that we've had recently, the latest one was 69 feet 11 inches. They could have asked for higher, but they didn't. They stayed at 69 11.
Okay.
And we had one that was off commercial, I believe that one was around that same height, a couple that had been about 100 feet, and those were either in CO zones or public zones.
Okay, so these towers are likely going to be anywhere from 50 to 100 feet.
Moving forward?
Right.
Yes, we're actually putting some height limitations on towers that are within 300 feet of the residential zones and some other things. So they would be allowed shorter, even if they're in a commercial or industrial zone because they're within 300 feet. So that's another layer that we're using as a protective measure to help the neighborhoods so that the towers will be more compatible.
And if a person were concerned about safety, when one of these things came down, a lot of communities looked at the height of the tower as sort of governing.
That's one way to go about it.
The safety of it hitting another structure, hitting people if it did come down.
Right, that's one way to go about it.
So 100 feet would be a reasonable standard, then?
In some cases, it will be more.
In terms of if that was the public safety concern that we were worried about.
Right, in some cases, it will actually be more than the height of the tower with the way that we have the other sections structured.
Yeah, we don't want to get that close to the next door, but we certainly want a safety barrier or buffer zone between the height of the tower and if one did come down. So don't want to scare everybody. I don't think we'd have any fall down, but.
We understand that when they're reviewed structurally, they're normally designed these days so that they don't fall over, that fall within themselves, as I understand it. But I understand what you're saying, and that would be one way to go.
You know, I'm thinking 30 years from now, we've had bridge parts that weren't supposed to fall, so, yeah. Or downtown parquet facades that weren't supposed to fall. So, okay, it's the metal after 30 years that I'm worried about.
I believe Counselor Tesler is next. Do you have a question or a comment for Mr. Gross?
I did. I just wanted to reconfirm in this very nicely-written memo from Counselor Berry, I believe. She refers to the FCC Telecommunications Act 47 U.S.C., I think the symbol means Section 332. And so you are interpreting from this section, which, according to you, has set precedence for all the other, the rest of these questions before us tonight.
That is correct, yes.
Okay, I'm just stating that for the citizens' audience. You can look this up online on the FCC website, which is also like reading the phone book, but it is there. And that is where we are getting this information from, is from those cases that have set precedents for this.
That is correct. It is judicial interpretations of the federal law. You're absolutely correct.
Counselor Ben Arz?
Thank you. You know, I've read the information that's been provided to us, and I've struggled with this issue of, is it 30 feet or is it 100 feet? And it seems a little bit arbitrary, and the only thing that comes close is the height of the tower versus the length of way from the tower. And then what I do hear about the issue is, well, those towers aren't likely to tip over as much as they are to bend or partway, that kind of thing. I don't know. What can I use to base off a decision that, you know, that I need to come up with? Is it reasonable to have 30 feet or 60 feet or something else? My, you know, question is, does staff need more time to, as this stuff is changing rapidly, both legal and technology, is it, staff need more time to look up this issue?
I don't think we need more time. My perception is that it's, it comes down to, it's a policy choice for the city council. And we can administer whatever setback you decide is best for Salem at this point in time. Again, our only concern would be if you didn't make that standard adjustable or variable.
And I think that's the key to the whole thing, is that you cannot, you cannot have this rule of limitation without having the ability to vary it in some way, shape, or form for different circumstances. I'm just not sure which way to take this thing at this point. I'm not satisfied with the 100-foot, and I'm not satisfied with 30. Variance is still in there, yes.
It is, yes.
But, but the problem is, is that if you go from the 30-foot variance, that means that most of your.
Excuse me, I'm going to interrupt for just a moment. I've been alerted by our city attorney that if we are through with questions of staff, that we need to have a motion before we begin to deliberate. So let's see where we are. Do we have more questions for staff?
Madam Mayor, if the council's willing, I was going to jump in and maybe add a little bit to the question. It's a very good question, how do we decide what the proper setback is? And I would agree with Glenn that the most important factor is to maintain the adjustment or variance procedure just so that we don't have a situation, as the city attorney pointed out, where in the future, when we're trying to apply this code, where we get in trouble. The problem, the way I see it, and I've worked on a lot of these, is that unless you go and study every possible place where a tower might locate in the city and how many feet it is from what zone, it's impossible to determine exactly what setback is right for Salem. And the variance is sort of our safety valve for that. So you can use safety, you can use the estimated height of average towers that Pamela talked about, 100 feet, which is a reasonable choice. It varies widely from community to community, and the most important thing, as I said, is to maintain flexibility. You can't, you could ask staff to go and study more possible locations adjacent to maybe take some sampling, but really, the thing about telecommunications cases is they are so fact-specific because each carrier has their own coverage patterns, their own technology, the terrain in the area, everything. There's so many variables that it's very difficult to come up with a definitive setback that is the perfect fit for every potential tower in Salem.
Thank you. Are there more questions? Let's see, Counselor Bennett?
Just checking on that, then, 30 feet, 300 feet, it's, both are arbitrary, both will be varied. That, I'm not sure what the problem was with 300 feet. Is it just the number of variances that you were processing?
Yes, at 300 feet, there's just hardly any land that's non-residential that you could cite a tower without going through a variance request.
It sound, okay. But it's argumentative, I don't want to, I'll go there later. On the capacity question, on capacity, I want to kind of understand it. Does it kind of cut both ways? of cut both ways? As the technology changes, there would be some anticipated change in kind of what capacity means? So when we find out that these things are just this year's solution to the really rapidly changing cycle of technology, and by two years from now, an entirely new technology very, based on an entirely different approach, more like, you know, 30 feet above the ground, flooding into an area with a certain kind of wave, is actually a better way to approach than going 100 or 70 feet into the air? Do we get the benefit of that? Do they have to take down their tower and go to this new high-capacity system? Let's assume some genius engineer is out there developing right now in his high school classroom, or his mother's basement?
Yeah, I'd like Pam to take that one.
So there, in fact, is a genius engineer, and that technology has already been developed.
And how's that work?
It's an interesting problem, and one of the things we tried to address with this code, because they are small boxes, they do need to be about 30 feet above ground, I'm not sure how you guessed that. They also need to be many, many more of them, because they do broadcast within a small area, and they are highly valued in residential areas, because they provide, you know, texting for your 14-year-old, and also dad needs to be on the computer doing work, and, you know, there is a capacity issue. So, capacity, though, I wouldn't say we need to anticipate new technologies, I feel like for at least the foreseeable future, the definition that we've arrived at will work, because there is a certain limit to every single piece of technology's ability to process information, and that's what we're trying to get at with the definition.
Just another question, but are we going for the cheap fix here, to the expense of our residential areas, by using this current technology, which allows you to get high, flood out, rather than, I mean, is this an economic decision to the benefit of the companies? Or is it a technological decision? We are not, I guess what I'm trying to understand is, if we said no to this, and in fact said no to variances, would we actually be denying companies the ability to come into our residential areas and meet capacity needs in those areas?
I see what you're saying, so would we try to sort of push them toward the smaller, lower?
Right.
Okay, so the law does prohibit us from dictating a particular technology.
Right.
So, we can't, we can't use that technique for that purpose. I would also say that a tower is incredibly expensive, and will not be built unless the provider believes that it will be a return on investment. In other words, they'll make a lot of money processing calls from that facility. So, there are both, there's a need currently for both kinds of facilities, both the towers and the lower, more localized facilities. And I, as I said, I would hesitate to try to regulate based on what the technology is, and each provider is, they're all working on new things all the time. We're now starting in 4G, and I think there's another new one coming down the pike. So, I really feel like the way we've designed it, to put it simply, is probably the most appropriately tailored toward our best knowledge of industry at this point.
Well, what worries, you know, and tell me if I'm worrying too much about this. I look at main streets in Salem with a technology that is, what, 100 years old, you know, wires on poles. But those poles never come down, even as we go toward wireless technology or buried, that are we creating our vista for our grandchildren and great-grandchildren, which are going to be these 70-foot towers, when in fact, there is a technological solution alternatively available?
Okay, that's a good question.
And coming quickly.
That's a good question, and I don't believe that on the horizon at this time is the complete replacement for towers, for a variety of reasons. And so, I'd be concerned from a legal standpoint if we tried to think along that line. The other thing I would say is that we, one of the comments in the submittals that staff and I put together, there was a concern that these towers would be abandoned then, as new technologies are developed and they're no longer useful. There, there's, in the land use process, each of these will receive a land use review, and in that process, there's a way to apply conditions of approval. If they're approved, that will help us to make sure that that doesn't happen, require removal. In cases where we're the landlord, if it's our property, we have even more ability to do that, so I don't see it as a big concern.
Thanks. Let's see, who was next with questions? Counselor Benard, and then Counselor Clausen, did you have questions?
I have an answer, please.
All right, thank you. Counselor Benard, go ahead.
I'll continue, but I'll focus my question a different way. Has staff gone through and looked at the number of applications that would have to go through a variance process if it was at 300, 100, some other number? So that you get to, say, 90% don't have to go through a variance process? That's what I'm getting.
I'll ask Pamela to answer that, I'm not sure if we have done that, no.
It's difficult to do that, because we never know until we get an application walking in the door, or for a pre-application conference. Generally, they're going to try to find the easiest solution, which is locating on an existing tower. They don't want to go through variance processes, because it's so difficult. They try to find every alternative they can before they get to that point. So, we have a few variances where they prove they met the criteria, and other situations, they've been able to locate on other facilities or on towers that didn't require variances, it's just difficult to say. But when we use that 300-foot setback, and we lay it out on the land use maps, as we showed you in January, it just reduces so many of the otherwise suitable areas from contention, without going through a variance process, it just becomes extremely difficult.
Okay, so the answer is you don't know at this point?
Not exactly, no numbers.
I'm trying to get analytical on how I determine the distance, and that comes from the variance, because that seems to be the primary thing that's tied directly to federal law, that we cannot prohibit. And essentially, if we have 80, or 90, or 100% of these going through variance process, you're essentially not forbidding them, but you certainly have put in a huge burden on those businesses.
Well, yes, but keep in mind that the ordinance is designed to set forth a priority system, so that our first priority is, in fact, what Pamela just said, is to co-locate on an existing structure. Not put in a new tower, not put in a taller tower, but to co-locate on an existing structure, keeping the same height. And then we go from there to lower and lower priorities, with the lowest priority, our least favorite scenario is a new tower. And so, that's how the ordinance is structured. The other thing that the ordinance does, as long as I've got the mic here, real quick, the other thing that the ordinance does is enhances the public review opportunities from what we have today. There's much more public notice given, much more opportunity for comment, and in some cases, actual public hearings.
Thank you.
All right, are there more questions of staff? All right, I see none. Counselor Tesler, do you have a motion for us this evening?
I do, as soon as I can make my cellphone work. Good thing there's a tower nearby, I guess.
This is a capacity issue.
Right.
Hold it up, hard.
So, I move to adopt staff recommendation to amend the ordinance as identified by staff, and advance the engrossed ordinance to second reading with the following additional amendment. Amend Section 703.070-B sub 1 of the proposed engrossed ordinance to change the minimum setback from 30 feet to 100 feet for new support towers of budding property zoned EFU, RA, RS, RD, RH, RM1, RM2, or CO.
Second.
All right, thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Tesler and seconded by Counselor Clem. Is there discussion? Counselor Tesler?
When we see things like this, we really want to deny things like this. It's our first initial reaction, and then you sit down and you read the legal attachments that come with these packets, and this very nicely written memo, and all the other information that we have to consider to make well-rounded, balanced decisions. Because you can't make gut decisions too much, without consequences. We must judiciously think about the financial, long-term effects of our decisions. In this case, a denial would have been very counterproductive, as it would have probably would have cost the city hundreds of thousands of dollars in legal fees, as a denial vote would have placed the city in violation of FCC rule. We are faced, and we are indeed tasked, by the citizens of this community with fiscal responsibility. And what is going on here is you're seeing the merger of that task of fiscal responsibility with trying to rectify how this is going to affect our community. I believe my motion attempts to try and address both these issues. And that's what I have to say.
Thank you. Counselor Bennett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm not willing to speculate on who's who on this. Somebody, I mean, everyone has the right, anytime, to file a lawsuit about anything. My understanding of the discussion tonight is that 30 feet, 100 feet, 300 feet, 500 feet, it's all arbitrary. It doesn't matter, because we are going to leave in place a variance process. And while I like a great deal of the new information inside this, to me, it's the failure to respect the fact that we have neighborhoods that are being, will be heavily impacted by this. And unfortunately for me, and my neighbors, it's our neighborhood. It's neighborhoods close inside the city, heavily residential, that a 70-foot tower disguised as anything is an odd and really jangling piece of equipment to have show up next door within 100 feet. And it's not necessary. I am convinced that this issue of capacity, which I believe is being defined, or is defined in such a way to be to the benefit of companies, who are served by that definition, just doesn't cut both ways. There is no benefit suggested to the community, as capacity changes with technology. And I think that's the one thing we're seriously overlooking, is the rapid change in this technology, that already, and I was kind of surprised, really, that it has changed as much as it has, that alternatives are readily available to tall towers in residential neighborhoods. I'm not talking about in other neighborhoods. I've had two of these varied in my ward over the past several months, and I brought both of them to council to illustrate, knowing this day would come, we'd have this discussion. One was in an area close to a couple of homes, but an industrial area, and we voted that through unanimously. We said that's part of the allowed use in industrial areas. The other was in a commercial area on Center Street, right next door to a large residential neighborhood in the Inglewood neighborhood, north of Center Street, or then, north of Center Street. No excuse for that to have gone through, in my opinion, that one passed, I think five to four. And what concerns me is that in both cases, it passed on a variance, we had the 300 feet, we had a strong discussion, I didn't win that argument, you know, I'd hope to in the future, as they start to locate these, I'm beginning to worry as to whether we could block any of these from coming into residential areas. And the bottom line to me in this discussion is, an economic advantage for the company, not a land use advantage, or a livability advantage for the neighborhood. And all it's about is money for a company, companies, as I recall, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that aren't paying us franchise fees, I'm not sure they provide any tremendous economic assistance to the city or to the neighborhoods. In the one that was put on Center Street, I looked at the map, it included my house many blocks away, as being one of those areas where capacity wasn't available. Not so, it just isn't so. I mean, just absolutely was not true. And yet, that passed, and that's the kind of problem we have. The only thing I can see is that in every single case, where these people are allowed to come in here and build these awful towers in our neighborhoods, there'd be a clear third-party review of capacity and of every other aspect of this, to ascertain, this absolutely is the only location in Salem that will provide the kind of service they seem to be thinking, and that's not in this ordinance, as I read it. And without that kind of third-party review, paid for by the company, not by the city or the taxpayers of Salem, I just don't see how we can pass this ordinance with a clear conscience for, particularly for neighborhoods like mine, so I'll be voting no on this. This is not ready. I don't think Salem, my neighborhood doesn't have the capacity for too many of these 70-foot towers, and I just really strenuously object to moving this forward.
Other comments from counselors? Counselor Clem?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I will be supporting the motion. We have worked this issue, in addition to those two variance hearings, I don't know how many meetings we've had on it, but I think it's time to do something. I, too, am concerned that in the future, we do look at land use permit process, to make sure that, yes, technology does change, we do remove these. My understanding is that there is a third-party review process for a type 3 and worse application. Mr. Gross, can you clarify where that third-party review is required? Because I want to make sure I consider Counselor Bennett's point about third-party review.
Well, I think what Counselor Bennett's saying, or what I heard him say, is it doesn't require, in all cases, a third-party review, but the proposed code does require the applicants, it allows the city to decide to require an applicant to pay for a third-party review for adjustments or new support towers in and within 300 feet of a residential zone. So it provides the possibility, the option, for the city to require it, but it doesn't automatically require it in all cases.
Okay, and if the code is, if this council adopts it with 100-foot, does that also need to be changed in the code, or would that automatically, if we went with 100-foot setback, would it require a third-party review?
No, I think that...
Anything greater than 100-foot?
Yeah, I think it, well, it's up to you, but I think as we drafted it, and with the counselor's motion, it would still stay at 300 feet.
It would still stay at 300 feet?
Right, for a third-party review.
Okay, and so, the tower could only be 100-foot away from property line, but if it's within 300 feet, it still requires?
We could require, the city has the option to require.
Okay, and if in fact, that needed to be changed, can that be changed at second reading, if council so decided, to the city attorney?
Yes, you can do it at second reading.
Yes, because I'd like to consider that matter further, prior to the second reading, but I think I'm ready to move on. I think we've spent enough time on this, and I think the motion is a solid one, it protects neighborhoods in a much greater way than was originally proposed, and for me, it's about safety as well as changing technology, so I'll be supporting the motion.
Thank you. Other comments? Counselor Benard?
I think we are tasked with finding a resolution to this matter, and I have struggled on some things, primarily the distance of the setback. But I'm going to support this measure, because I truly believe it isn't just about a person who doesn't like a tree, that's a cell tower, but I think that there's far more many people out there who are saying, "I need service in my neighborhood, and I don't have it." And I'm speaking to the neighborhood of where I represent, happens to be Elahie, Robert's Crossing, has no service whatsoever. That whole neighborhood has no service whatsoever, and it's barely manageable up in Elahie, and the actual houses that are up there as well. And if we go by what Counselor Tesler has proposed, we still have an out, which is to go through a variance process, because there isn't anything out there, commercial hardly at all, except Robert's Crossing, and maybe the store, the Plaid Pantry, further down on River Road, but we need something sooner or later out in that area to have coverage. I'm supporting it, because the tree is not an issue. I've had many a beer at McVinneman's on South Liberty Road, and there's a cell tower right next to it, and unless you had somebody point it out to you, time and time again, nobody ever... And unless you've had somebody point it out to you time and time again, nobody ever sees it. It looks a little strange when you finally notice that it's a tree, or if you're sitting there and some little piece of plastic needle comes down on top of your head, it's always kind of fun. But it's a non-issue. It's just like, like having chickens. I'm not going to bring too far into that whole thing, but I have three chickens. It's a non-issue. They, they don't make a noise, they don't make a fess. And the same thing with the cell towers, as far as I'm concerned, it doesn't, it doesn't bother anything. It's a good thing for this community, and I really think that the neighbors, whether they be on South Liberty Road or in West Salem or out at Robert's, when I can attest to, they want service more than they really, really, really care. They, they do care about how the aesthetics of their neighborhood looks. So I think having that requirement, having the idea of having variance in it, I would like staff to, to look at, as I've alluded in all the other conversation, where is that? It's a statistical issue to me to figure out where is it that you could do a cutoff rather than a numerical one, simply based on the height of the tower, simply based on an arbitrary number, whether it's a hundred, three hundred, whatever. That I can go with, but I am going to support the, the measure as, as presented.
All right. There's a motion on the floor. More comment? Counselor Clausen and then Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to be supporting the motion along the lines of Counselor Benars. I think the reason we're all here considering this is that this is a critical service that the citizens of Salem expect, is the ability to have cell service in their home and any place around the city of Salem. And I think what this resolution allows us is a predictable method and a clean method that anybody can go and read for what's allowed and what's not allowed. And that's a lot better way to go. I think that's the, what our role for city council is. Thirty feet, a hundred feet, you know, I'm kind of up in the air on it. I think it's a good starting point at a hundred feet, and we'll see kind of what happens, and we'll go from there. But I will say, as Counselor Benars mentioned, my ward, Ward Four, has vast swaths of residential areas with no break at all. And I know I've been on the phone with my carrier at points because of dropped service out there, and they tell me where the towers are, and I start looking at a map, and I'm like, there's no commercial zone in between those towers. There's nothing that they can do, my layman's perspective on it, in terms of expanding that coverage. But again, that's my layman's term. I don't know exactly what that means. But I think it's important that we provide a predictable code for us to be able to work from. And then, you know, we'll give it a year as council, and we'll see what happens. And if there's any big issues, then obviously anything can be addressed again if needed.
Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I thought staff did a great job of addressing the issues. My issue still is the feds telling us what to do, which I really hate. Actually, I was reading an article the other day, talked about low Earth orbit satellites that'll flood and give free Wi-Fi to anyone and everyone because there's communication issues in, in several foreign countries where they aren't allowed to access information. And without some serious jamming technology, they're trying to actually reach the entirety of the population. But with free Wi-Fi to everyone, all towers could potentially go away. They're actually going to be shooting up one of their first satellites here within the next year or two, so. Technology is changing, and it's changing rapidly. I'm cognizant of staff time. Anytime they have to process a variance, we have to make sure there's enough people on our staff to be able to cover that. The cost of the variance to the provider gets passed along to us, their users, as well. I'd prefer to stay a heck away from the majority of the variances. I'm going to be voting against it just because, as I mentioned, I hate the feds telling me what to do for something that I don't think they have the authority to do.
All right. Counselor Tesler? Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Dickey and then Counselor Tesler. Sorry.
Thanks, Mayor. Well, I'll be supporting the motion. I know this has been a really complicated issue that we've been looking at for a long time, a year or more now, it seems like. And, and it's always challenging when we're doing something related to technology because it's, it's hard to be up to date with the latest technology because it is changing so quickly. I, I just kept thinking of, my employer just upgraded from Windows 2003 to 2007. So now we're not eleven years behind, we're just seven years behind. You know, so that's, and that's just kind of the way it is. It's always a moving target. So I'm, I'm kind of in the camp that we can revisit this in a year and see how's it working. I would be concerned about the number of variances that are processed. Are we still getting a lot of them? Do we need to take a look at it? What's working, what's not working? And, and it would be interesting to know how many variances have been requested at that three hundred foot, if that information is readily available, because I think that will help us when we reevaluate in a year. We can say, you know, in 2012, we had X number of variances, in 2014, we had X number of variances. So I think that would be helpful information, as well as, I think, input from the community. I would love to hear from the community members who either, you know, they, maybe they express the concerns that Counselor Bennett expressed, or maybe they say, "Hey, I need service," or, "Hey, I've got great service now." I think, you know, in, in the coming months, I would love to, for us to be able to get some of that feedback. I think that would be really helpful as we move ahead and, and want to revisit this. So I think a hundred feet at this point is a good compromise, but, you know, I say, proceed with caution, and we'll get more information as we kind of work through this process.
All right. Who was next? Counselor Tesler?
I also just wanted to say that we received a lot of neighborhood comment on this issue. And I got a lot of comment from people on this issue. And I really want to thank the people, especially the people in Ward One and Counselor Bennett's Ward, who really took the time and researched this issue and sent very, very good public comment. And I don't want anybody to feel like their public comment was not read, because I can tell you, I read your public comment, and so did Chuck, because we talked about it many times. And this, it's just an issue that, like I said, we have to consider the needs of being fiscally prudent and also what neighborhoods want and need. So I just don't want anybody to think that it doesn't matter what they thought, because it did matter. And in a lot of these public comment, I totally agree with you. But you have to put yourself in our position when we decide these issues, too. So I would ask your forbearance on that.
Thank you very much. Were there other comments? All right. We have a motion on the floor. I believe the motion was by Counselor Tesler and seconded by Counselor Clem. Thank you. If there's no further discussion, we'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion carries, and the nay vote by Counselor Nanki. And, oh, I'm sorry, and Counselor Bennett as well. Sorry, I didn't see that. Yes, please record. Counselor Bennett did vote no. Yes, thank you.
No with big, big letters.
All right. We have no special orders of business and no unfinished business this evening. There are several information reports. We've spoken about some of them. And I want to be certain that if counselors have any other comments about information reports, you have a moment now to bring those to our attention. All right. And we have, oh, did I skip over the public comment? No. Oh, on that one, yes, you, okay, yes. Counselor Bennett, did you have a question and want a presentation on information item seven G? The Salem Downtown Economic Improvement District?
I did, please.
Okay. Two thousand thirteen report. And I believe we have a staff person who's going to present that report.
Thank you, Mayor. Doug Ruck, Assistant Director for Urban Development. We're going to have Cherie Wargren provide you a brief kind of presentation on the activities of the Steering Committee as they relate to the Economic Improvement District in the downtown.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor and counselors. My name's Cherie Wargren, Downtown Revitalization Manager in the Urban Development Department. In your materials this evening, you received an information report on the Salem Downtown Economic Improvement District, which includes the two thousand and thirteen Economic Improvement District Report. This provides the city council with information about how the EID expenditures have been made and the projects and the accomplishment. The Steering Committee has been meeting on a regular basis since last April, and they came up with goals. And the goals were downtown cleanliness, communication, beautification, and marketing and promotion. And the report summarizes the project and the accomplishments that have taken place between April and the end of the year. Downtown cleanliness was the number-one priority that came out of the Steering Committee. They had many discussions on what types of things would be for the benefit of most everyone that came to downtown. Property owners would receive a benefit if the downtown had a consistent cleanliness. Certainly, the businesses would receive a benefit for that. The property owners would be able to recruit and retain if there was a consistent cleanliness. And certainly, any visitor or shopper to downtown would have a better environment if everything was clean. So they came up with the idea of a downtown clean team. You probably saw them in the lime green jackets throughout the summer. We had three in the summer, and we have two. They've been on the sidewalks, and to date, they have picked up three hundred and ninety bags of trash. And over the fall this year, we had a team that could pick up those leafs, and they picked up over a hundred bags of leaves. Communication was also a high priority, which is one of the reasons why the Steering Committee has sent out numerous quarterly reports and felt that this report was important to give to the property owners and businesses. In addition to electronic and mail, they also came up with the vision of the Block Captain Program. And basically, the vision for that program from the Steering Committee was to have a representative from each of the blocks meet with their businesses in their block and come back and represent to the rest of the block captains and to the city issues and concerns that they had. The goal of the block captains is to build those partnerships within the, with neighboring businesses, be a positive voice for downtown, and provide input on their needs to decision-makers as yourself, so that you can be better informed of what they're thinking. We had a kickoff event in January. We've had orientations, and we had our full block meeting, captain meeting, last week, and it was well-attended, and everyone provided information. For beautification, we put up new banners, and they complement the wayfinding system that we have in downtown. There was also banners put on the pillars, you might notice, in front of the convention center there on Liberty Street. We also shared holiday lights to enhance the pedestrian environment in the downtown over the holiday season. With respect to promotion and marketing, this year, we had the first golden ticket program. I hope you all were familiar with that. That was a suggestion by businesses that participated in the Holiday Planning Committee. And again, the program, I thought, was really quite brilliant in that it encouraged shoppers to come down, and if they hit a certain threshold, they received a golden ticket. And then on the back of the golden ticket, it told you the other participating businesses. And when you went to that business, there was an incentive or redemption value. It was unique to each of those businesses. We had thirty businesses participated, and I was really happy with that, because the first year, you never know what you're going to get, and the businesses were very diverse. And they gave out over fifty-nine-hundred golden tickets over the holiday season. So I think that those that participated and promoted the concept had fun with it, and it was successful for them. In addition, we've done posters and promotion of First Wednesday over the last eight months. Before you this evening, you have first reading of the ordinance that will allow the city to move forward, the process for a new three-year EID, which includes a public hearing for remonstrance on June ninth. I just thank you for the opportunity to share, and I'm available for questions if you have any.
All right. Are there questions? Thank you very much for the report. I see no questions by you counselors. I'd like to take just a second to say a really sincere thank you to all of the downtown merchants and property owners and volunteers who are serving on the, on that downtown committee. And I'm going to read the names. Of course, Linda Norris, our city manager, is with that group and meets regularly with them. Jim Bauer, Irene Bernards, Chrissy Birch, Garth Brandog, Gail Calderazzo Doty, Randy Compton, Jonathan Fahey, Steve Johnson, Casey Lucas, Angie Morris, Nick Williams, Rick Yurk, and Mary Lou Zeig. So a real thank you to all of those individuals who are giving extra time and talent and creative input. I'm very pleased with what I'm seeing and what I hear when I'm downtown. Many of the merchants are very pleased with the way that the city is interacting and moving the EID concept forward. Counselor Bennett, did you have a comment?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to second your comments and, and sort of underscore one of Cherie's comments, which is the importance of this kind of positive campaign. We, we get enough, I think, naysaying coming out of elements throughout the committee, community around issues involving the downtown. And, and it's good to have both, something counterbalancing, that there are certainly debates and arguments that go on around everything. We can focus on the negative, which some like to do, and try to drive downtown down. Or we can do this kind of positive activity and try to have things improving down there. I'm proud that the city is involved in the positive side of this.
Well, I'm very pleased to see that. And I'm also pleased to see the kind of private sector development or private sector investment downtown. Certainly, the Salem Center improvements have been very, very remarkably noted by shoppers and the people who are actually leasing space in Salem Center, as well as the property investment project that the Gail Calderazzo Doty and her husband Doug Doty are doing. We have a new building that's going to come up on the corner of State and Commercial. Thank you. As well as other properties downtown that have had some refurbishment, including the new Amadeus Restaurant in that building. So I think we're seeing a real uptick on downtown, and I'm optimistic that we're going to see some more improvements down there. So thank you, Cherie, for that report and the work that you're doing. All right. We have ordinances for first reading. Would the recorder please introduce the first one?
Ordinance Bill number three dash fourteen relating to the Salem Downtown Economic Improvement District, amending SRC forty-four point zero one five.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I move the staff recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Tesler to move the staff recommendation. Is there discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Thank you. And we have no second reading, public comment. Do we have someone for public comment? Thank you. Mr. Ron Sturba for public comment this evening. Welcome. You have three minutes, as you well know.
He's a professional public commenter. Well, good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, counselors, and city staff. You know the subject I've been speaking on in the past about the LED lighting, street lighting in the city of Salem. And I continue to follow that with the PUC and PGE and ODOT with representatives from our, Brian Clem, also his office. I want to talk about the fixtures again. The manufacturer started with Cree. The, I asked for the model number from PGE, and they gave it to me. And it starts with S T R, which means it starts with a, a model number that indicates the street. That's what I'm told. So these streetlights have been put up at four-way intersections, are for straight streets, which means two streets get light and the other street, two streets, get reduced light footprint. And that has been my problem in the whole time, is that it wasn't engineered properly. Someone didn't sit down specifically, go into our neighborhood and say, "We have a four-way intersection, let's put a lamp here." I sent an email to each one of you counselors to take a look at a footprint of a light made by the same manufacturer, Cree, on Royal Avenue, and it's got a beautiful- made by the same manufacturer, Cree, on Royal Avenue, and it's got a beautiful footprint of light. No shadowing, no dark areas, and I believe this would be the best light for four-way intersections in our secondary neighborhood streets. So I'd like you to take a look at that. Also, I'd like you to, counselors, take a look at postponing the LED lighting program in Salem until another year, because technology is evolving. If you were to take a look at that new light footprint, you'll see that the new LED light diodes are new technology. They're already moved from the little blue lights that you're seeing here. So something to consider on that. One of the things I'd like to say is that there's a lot of glare that comes from those lights. 20% of the population of Oregon is over 60. As we get older, our night vision starts deteriorating. One of the things I'm going to ask you to look at, the streetlights that were put up, converted by PGE, do you want to be in competition between the footprint of light on the ground or the glare from the light? Now, we have intersections already that have the light emitting unit, whether it be a diode, a filament, a tube in a housing that projects the light down, but doesn't throw the glare out, and that's what I'd like to see the city, that's what the country's going to, that's what IDA is going to, the International Dark Sky Association. Let's cut glare down. I want this city not to have this type of lighting, because it's first generation. I want you to look at other manufacturers. Leo Tech is another one that has them off Lancaster. They're different, they're a beautiful footprint of light, and I think you really enjoy it, and I think there needs to be consideration. I'd love to work with Public Works, get a committee of neighborhood committee members to take a look at what manufacturer best serves our community's needs, because we have streets on hillsides, and we have flat streets, so we have different variances to what we live in. And so I thank you very much for this time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, very much. Are there any questions by counselors? Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. More of a comment. Do you go and talk to PGE at all? Because we have no projects in place, we have no funds allocated to converting to LED. None of those lights are ours. They belong to PGE, and we can't tell them what to do.
That is correct, and there is another LED program that the city has for the city-owned lights, is that correct?
No. No, that is incorrect. There is no program. We have proposed a program as part of the streetlight fee, and if that were, if the council ultimately decide to adopt that, then we would have a program, because that includes a funding mechanism over three years to install that, but until that funding mechanism is in place, there is no program. The changes that you've seen, and I believe they're pretty well complete, is a change out of PGE lamps, PGE-owned lamps. Salem Electric is going to start to replace some of theirs over a number of years, but the city has no plans and no funding to replace any of our, any of our lamps anytime, anytime in the near future.
Counselor Bennett?
Thank you. Mr. Fernandez, I just wondered on this, if we had a program. Well, I hate to ask-
I would prefer to think it's when, Counselor Bennett.
Yeah, when we have a program, sorry. When we have a program. Mr. Sturba has described, you know, an advisory committee. Is that how you would do this? How would you do this?
No, that is not the way we would do it. We would work with Portland General Electric and Salem Electric. They have done the research, they have what is the industry standard, and what we have to think about is what are the industry standards, and that's what we need to install, because when we need to change them out, or when we have other issues related to the acquisition and installation, we need to be in line with what's provided, and we can't be out in an outlier situation when we have limited funding. So that is the issue that we need to face. Now, that if we entered into a program and we wanted to do some outreach and wanted to better explain what the situation is, Mr. Sturba's done a tremendous amount of research, so we would be delighted to have him come in and show us what we have, and if what Mr. Sturba is suggesting is something that is part of an industry standard, that's different from what PG has installed, but is something that we could install, then we'd be open to having that conversation, but we can't be way out, we have never been way out in either the cutting edge of technology, because we simply have never been able to afford to make that kind of error and then not be able to afford the, what we're installing or what we need to then replace.
But that process of where you may involve Mr. Sturba or others, or that whole process really awaits funding?
It awaits funding.
Okay.
It awaits funding. At this point, we have no funding. We appreciate PGE's efforts to move ahead with what they've done, and Salem Electric is on a much slower pace, but at this point, the change out of, the two issues that Mr. Sturba has spoken about, the change out of the bulbs that the city owns, and how luminaires are placed at intersections where we may be missing one or two light standards, all awaits funding.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments by counselors? All right, thank you. Now I've gone and lost my agenda.
Thank you.
All right. We have no new business, no counselors' items or mayor's items, and we are adjourned.